Okay. So I start off with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge, appreciate that the land on which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation, and we have occupied this territory since time immemorable. Called to order, I just want to welcome members from the Ukrainian Congress of Canada. Maybe this is your first time in city halls, so sit back and enjoy the ride. And want to welcome the members from QB 830. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Proll of agenda? Council Ramsey.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just so we don't have to keep a whole lot of people around this evening if they don't want to stay, could we move E up to A with Parks and Recreation?
Do you want to make, I think they want to make the presentation first because we have someone online, is that right, Anna?
Okay. Okay. Good.
I'd like to move that, do I have a second or?
Second. All those in favor? All those against? Council Dran, can you hear me? Okay. Still not coming in. Okay. Okay, so 4A becomes B, and then follows C, D, E, so E becomes 4A. So Council Ramsey, we have two resolutions, tender award and the Hallamador commemoration monument installation. Did you want to say anything there, sir?
Yes, thank you very much, your worship. First of all, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Ricky Burns, a longtime employee for the City of Charlestown Parks and Recreation, who passed away two days ago, or yes, two days ago, I believe, the wake is today, and if it's possible, I would like to have a moment of silence for Ricky.
Do you want to go with the first? Do you want to have the resolution read first, or what's your preference?
I would have the resolution read first, if you don't mind, your worship. Thank you.
Just one second there, Grant. Can you hear us now, Council Dran? It's in and out. Okay. Sorry, CAO, do you want to read it?
Thank you, your worship. Parks and Recreation and Leisure Activities Resolution Number One, moved by Council Kevin Ramsey, and we seem to be, excuse me, worship, we don't have a second or on that resolution. We will, can you?
Or do you want to get to Justin?
Yeah, Justin.
Is the Council Bernard's name on it? Grant? Council Bernard's name on it?
Yeah. Moved by Council Kevin Ramsey and seconded by Council Justin Matarde. Let it be resolved that as per the recently advertised tender for the East Rowley Park dash pathways and parking project, the City of Charlestown accepts the low bid amount of $112,315 plus applicable taxes from Hilltop Construction Company Limited, and the amount of $36,358 plus applicable taxes from Coles Associated Limited for engineering fees, project management, and professional services be accepted. And further that the mayor and the CEO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Council Ramsey? Sorry, Council Twill?
Terms of the trails and rails and walkways, what phase of the project is this at now? Will this complete the project that was set out by Parks and Recreation over the last two or three years? What phase are we at now?
Rank? Council Ramsey, through to Council Twill. So we're in, I guess you'd call it the second phase. We moved the playground equipment there last year. So this is the phase where putting the pathways in. We're actually addressing the entrances and a few other items in that whole part of the project, but yeah, so following this, we'll see what is left to be done. We still do have the, we have a lookout that's being proposed into Wright's Creek, and then we're also looking at upgrading the existing building there. It needs some repairs and work as well, so, but yeah, so we're probably, I guess you'd say phase two, if you were looking at phases. It's in, we're adhering to the master plan or the concept plan that was done for that whole park, so.
Good. Questions called? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Council Dran, can you hear me? Can't record his vote. Okay, eight zero. Want to read the next one, sir?
Parks and Recreation and Leisure Activities Resolution Number Two, moved by Council Kevin Ramsey and seconded by Council Justin Matarde. Let it be resolved that council approves Confederation Landing as a location to install the Hallamor Commemorative Monument, and that the Ukrainian, Canadian Congress, PEI branch, will be covering all associated costs with the purchasing and installation of the monument, and that the Parks and Recreation staff will coordinate and enter a memorandum of understanding of agreement with the Ukrainian, Canadian Congress, PEI branch, to ensure smooth installation of the monument at the proposed site. And further that the mayor and the CEO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Deputy Mayor Yankov.
Thank you, your worship, and my fellow colleagues. I just first want to make it very clear that this evening about my position on the resolution before is regarding the proposed monument from the Ukrainian, Canadian Congress. First, I want to state plainly that my decision tonight has absolutely nothing to do with the applicant. I have great respect for the Ukrainian community and the history that they wish to honor. The genocide known as Hallamador was a tragedy of global significance, and the desire to memorialize it is deeply understandable. This is not a yes or a no to this monument or to any particular group. This is about process. At our regular meeting of council on September 9th, I asked two important questions. Did this request require vetting through Heritage Board or Heritage Committee? And do we have a policy guiding how monuments are considered city-owned land? The answers came back clear. No vetting required through our Heritage Department. However, equally important, we do not have a monument policy. To me, this matters. We already have policies for naming streets, parks, and benches. We have an art installation policy. These provide fairness, transparency, and consistency in decision-making. When it comes to monuments, permanent, symbolic, often sensitive installations on public land, we have no guiding framework at all. It wasn't that long ago that a councilor asked to name a park after an individual. That request was denied because we had no policy. We later created a policy. That, to me, is what good governance is. Clear rules apply equally. I'd also acknowledge something important. In the past, I may have supported requests like this without a policy in place, but when you know better, you do better. So I've come to regret or question some of those decisions because they weren't grounded in clear criteria. That's exactly why I'm standing firm tonight, to make sure we don't repeat that mistake. Yes, the MGA gives council the authority to make decisions, but the MGA doesn't guide us in how to weigh cultural, historical, or artistic significance. That's why municipalities across the country adopt their own policies. As George Cuff has written in his work on municipal governance, "Good process is not bureaucracy, it is fairness made visible." That is the principle I want to uphold tonight. I have already submitted a notice of motion to establish a monument policy before any further applications are considered. That motion will come forward to our October monthly meeting of council. Until such policy is in place, I cannot in good conscience support this resolution. This is not about turning away this applicant or any future applicant. This is about making sure our council governs fairly, consistently, and transparently, with the same rules applying to all. This isn't a no to the Ukrainian monument, it's a not yet. Once we have a proper monument policy in place, I'll gladly consider this and any other application with the fairness that they all deserve. So for that reason, I will not be supporting this resolution this evening. Without a monument policy, supporting this resolution would be inconsistent and unfair, so I will be voting no.
Thank you, deputy. Council Twill?
First of all, I want to welcome members of the Ukrainian community here tonight for tonight's proceedings. Thank you for being here. Back on September the 17th, I sent an email into all members of city council and city administration, and I'd like to read it. "Good morning. It is now time for the City of Charlestown to draft and develop a policy for monuments and statues to be erected in the city's right-of-way. This also applies to Parks and Recreation, venues, and facilities, as well as any other public spaces in the city. Residents are becoming increasingly concerned, and rightly so, regarding as to why there is no policies, no process, and no procedures. Where is the application for any institution, any agency, any nationality, or any other group wanting to install some type of a structure to reflect their identity and their culture? We seem to be executing in an ad hoc basis with no rhyme, no reason, and the question is why? Why is the city cherry-picking as to who gets a monument and statue, who doesn't? What are the criteria, and what is the terms of reference? What is the protocol? What is the procedure, and where's the policy, and how's that process outlined? Where's the application? Formed to illustrate all of the above prerequisites. The article in the media today is a case in point." This is This is in regard to MAD. "We received a request for the reinstatement of the statue Sir John A. McDonald. No response from the city whatsoever. The question is why? Who decides, and under what premise? What guidelines, standards, and requirements are appropriate? Before any decision or recommendations are voted on by City Council, I am strongly recommending that senior management, senior management, develop a report and submit their respective findings to the City Council through the appropriate committee, and then a recommendation should be brought to council. There should also be a jurisdictional scan from a regional and from a national perspective and philosophy for guidelines and clarity. Thank you for seriously considering, for serious consideration. This very important, a very sensitive, and very valuable matter. City of Charlottetown needs to be proactive and not reactive for requests for monuments and statues." So having said that, I didn't receive a response. I was trying to be proactive. I sent this email out to all members of City Council, because now we're seeing it being played out in the media, whether it's a statue for MAD, what are we going to do with the former Sir John A. McDonald? Is that going to be brought back? Is it not going to be brought back? What's the criteria? Nobody seems to know. There's no, there's no logical format that council or city administration is following. So I very much appreciate and respect the members of the Ukrainian community, but I also want to respect the process so that any, any agency or any nationality that comes through the doors of the City of Charlottetown, it's okay. Please help me. What's the terms of reference? What's the criteria? What's the prerequisite? We don't have that. We have nothing on paper. Other municipalities across Canada have these guidelines and have these prerequisites, and they're clearly illustrated in a document so that you go through it, you work with city administration to see how, you know, how best we can help their respective requests. Right now, we don't have that. So I'm certainly not against, but what I'm in favor of is I want a policy that's truly open and transparent. We don't have that. We're doing things on an ad hoc basis, and I don't think we can function that way. With all due respect to everyone in this chamber, I don't think we can function that way.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Twill. Counselor McTart?
Great. Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Counselor Twill. So Counselor Twill, I know you did send that email, and I did respond with my thoughts and comments on that email. So I too, like Deputy Mayor and yourself, believe that, you know, we need to address any gaps and inconsistencies, or even the absence of any policies or procedures regarding monuments and statues. You know, I think in the, you know, the spirit of trying to follow good governance and making sure that we're fair to all user groups who go in, this isn't, again, for me, anything to do other than just following proper due diligence and process and to support any community that comes forward with a statue or a monument. In reading the package, you know, there's a little bit of a nuance to this as well with now saying it's a bit of a structure, and that as a result of that, you know, so that added now another layer of complexity for me into it, because I think it adds some ambiguity to it, and the fact of knowing, is it a monument? Is it a structure? Is structures different than monuments and statues, et cetera, in the way in which we look at it from the policies and procedures that we currently have in place. So I would be in favor of certainly, you know, looking at this application again, once we have a policy in place that allows us to formally bring that through and to vet it through the proper assessments that need to be done, and for anybody that comes forward. And we'd have a consistent way of doing so. So that's kind of where I'm standing right at the moment on this as well. I think if there's work to be done internally by the city administration and council to come up with a policy around that, I think this is, this sheds light on that gap that we have, and I would support moving forward, doing that. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McTart. Thank you, Counselor McTart. Counselor Dran, are you on?
Yes, I am, Mayor Brown. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McCabe?
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat everything. I do want to say, you know, we are a very diverse community, and that is something that we do value and we celebrate. I do believe that we need to be able to say, is this equal for all? Is this something that we can do? We've heard that message, but that's kind of been my, my go-to question. So as you just heard from the other speakers before me, it's not that I'm not in support of the request for a monument. As I've already, as it's already been stated, I definitely would welcome this proposal being reconsidered, but I do think that we do need to have very clear, fair, open, transparent policies in place to ensure that all of our members who come to Charlottetown from diverse populations have the same equal opportunity.
Thank you. Counselor Beck?
I'm okay with this myself. I'm okay with us getting a policy, figuring some of that stuff out. I think that's great. I believe in this particular instance, it's been a lot of research done in terms of the significance, in terms of the meaning of it. The Ukrainian committee has really embraced our community here since their arrival, and I think when you look at it, I think we're putting a lot of emphasis in terms of fairness and due process. This, I think this is a question of fairness here in this particular instance here with this particular group and their request. It's subtle in nature. It's put in a, in a place that is actually accessible, visible where it is, and I think it's been well thought out. I would encourage the promotion of a policy. I would encourage that continue, but on this particular motion, I'm going to vote in favor, and I believe it's something that we should move forward, and I'm good with the work that's been done, and I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Counselor McLaer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. I'll be brief. I too will be supporting the resolution as presented, but I think Deputy Mayor Yankoff has, you know, outlined very good reasons for why we, there should be a policy on this going forward, and as has Counselor Twill, so I'd certainly be in a favor. I'm sure staff and department people are listening, and the appropriate committee and staff will work on, you know, work on this policy piece as it relates to monuments. Thank you.
Okay. Question? Oh, Counselor Twill and Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Again, to be consistent with what I stated earlier, you know, we certainly, I think everyone in this chamber wants to work with the Ukrainian community. That isn't the issue. The issue is, we've had requests made by MAD, we've had other requests regarding other statues, and we have nothing on paper. We don't have a terms of reference. We don't have any prerequisites. I don't think we can function on an ad hoc basis, with all due respect to everyone here tonight. So I don't think it'd take too long to ask our CAO, Doug Dumay, and others in senior management, to work on a policy. Wouldn't take too long, two or three weeks, due to a regional and national jurisdictional scan, bring in a policy so that it's consistent, it's coherent, and everyone knows upfront, and then we can invite our Ukrainian community back, and let's, let's do a proper process. So in that vein, I will move a deferral.
So deferrals be moved, but we, CAO?
Deferral for what?
We have our staff.
That's, that's a policy issue.
Our senior staff. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's a policy issue. Go ahead. That's a, we're going to be doing that. What we're voting on tonight is the Holomador statue.
Excuse me, sir. I have a floor. I have a floor. You know what? I wish you wouldn't argue with me. I really wish you wouldn't.
What?
So I said, I wish you wouldn't argue with me. Don't argue with me.
Go ahead.
I move the deferral to mandate our senior staff to work on a policy, the procedures, to bring it back to council, so council can examine the merits of that policy. And then once we have the policy voted on by City Council, then we can invite our Ukrainian community, MAD, and any, any other organization, because they've made requests as well. So I move the deferral so that we can have a policy in place. So that, so that we can be proactive, and the whole city knows as to what, what the terms of reference is. Thank you.
As Presiding Chair, I'm going to say that we've already deferred it because of the historical issue. We got a notice of motion for next month to look into the policy, of developing policy, so these are separate issues. The vote stands on what we have in front of us, and that is, council approves Confederation Landing as the location to install the Holomador Commemoration Monument. So that's where we're at. Deputy Mayor? Deputy Mayor Yankoff? Deputy Mayor Yankoff? Well, again, I'm trying to say that we have a policy that's going to be coming forward, and it's, it's a notice of motion. Let the deputy go first. Deputy?
Thank you, Your Worship, and just a point of clarity. I just want it to be, to be clear that this has nothing to do with the Ukrainian application for the Holomar. It's, this position is entirely about process, so without a monument policy, I can't support the application now, which means that if, if this resolution is going forward, I will be voting against the resolution this evening because we don't have a policy. However, if Counselor Twill is putting a deferral on the floor, I would ask for an amendment to his deferral that would maybe say, deferring this application for a few months, or however long it takes staff to create the policy, and that can sit in a deferral state, if you wish, until a policy comes back through its several readings, which could end up being four to six months, but I don't know what the lifetime of the deferral is or not, so I don't know if you can, or if, without a policy, it would have to start over again because it would have to go through a policy process. So I don't know if we could actually do a deferral, because once the policy's in place, there'd be an application process, so they would have to then bring that forward. So if CAO or Your Worship could just clarify that, I don't know if deferral's even possible without an existing policy first to outline that.
We don't have anything in place. That, that's coming next month. Like, I can tell you that I support a policy development, anything, especially what we're looking at for monuments. So we will be going through that process starting next month. Counselor Beck? Just one second. Go ahead.
Just to make, yeah, sure. Just procedurally, does he not have to get a second, because he put the motion on the floor? So, and then we have to deal with that motion, like, or do we, or do we even get a second? I don't know. But he put, Counselor Twill put the motion on the floor. I think we have to find out if there's a second for the motion, do we not?
Well, what I'm saying as Presiding Chair is that, what are we deferring? We're going, we will have, we will start the policy process after we have a discussion at our next monthly meeting, regular monthly meeting, for the notice of motion coming from Deputy Mayor Yankoff, which will deal with the, any, any, any discussion on the, on a policy for monuments. What we have in front of us here is a resolution to approve Confederation Landing as the location to install the Holomador Commemoration Monument. That's what we're voting on.
I know that.
I know.
But he put a motion on the floor. Does we, do we have to find out whether there's a second for that motion? He, he put it on the floor. He wants this deferred until the policy comes back. Do we not have to find out? And then if there's no one who wants to second it, we can return to this particular motion? I don't know if it's up to you to decide whether it's a deferral or not. I have no idea.
Well, that's, I'm trying to distinguish between what's in front of us right now, and that that is a resolution to deal with approving Confederation Landing as the location to install the Holomador Commemoration Monument.
And I want to know whether I'm speaking to a deferral, whether I'm speaking to the original motion.
CAO, any advice on it?
Well, Your Worship, I've just consulted with legal and senior staff on this. It's kind of uncharted ground. We certainly, we don't have a policy in place currently, you know, the resolution before us, so deferral to whatever time period is not clearly defined. So, you know, I'm not sure I can add a lot of clarity to Counselor Beck's question. I think it's up to council to decide if they'll, you know, entertain this resolution tonight, or, you know, or, you know, the deferral process, you know, is, is possible if it's seconded, but, you know, again, to, to what timeframe are you deferring it to?
Okay, that's basically saying fifty-fifty. So again, it can be challenged. So what Counselor Beck is asking, we need a second for the deferral. Let's get a second. Who's going to second it? The deferral. I don't know what to, let's find a second for his deferral.
I asked for clarity on, or whether or not Counselor Twill was willing to do a bit of a friendly amendment for a little bit more detail on the reasons for the deferral before I was able to second it, because right now, a deferral, it's just going to the ether, and that's why I was looking for clarity. Is, can you? And CAO McConnell has just said that it's, it's kind of uncharted. We don't know if you can defer something that, to, to something, because if, if and when we get a policy in place, then they, then unfortunately, the two folks that have monument applications and now really don't have applications in, because we don't have an application yet for monuments. So it kind of seems like a bit of a, you know, this doesn't seem like, like it makes sense to do a deferral, Counselor Twill?
Can I just?
It seems like we more have to either accept or reject the resolution as it is now, and then, and then go forward with a monument policy, and then encourage the existing applications that are out there to, to bring it in through, through an application process. Anyways, I digress.
Frank, can, can you just tell us where we've been going on this monument issue? Do you want to give a little background?
Sorry, on monument issue?
Yeah, well, we, we put up the peace poll in Confederation Landing.
So as, in previous years, like, as requests come in, we've dealt with them on their, their own merits. So we haven't been bombarded with requests, but we've had requests, probably one of the most recent ones was the peace poll. It was a poll, so it was a little smaller structure. We have done monuments previously, the Mitch and Tanner Monument that's down at Memorial Park that was put in place, requests from the family. It was dealt with, like, sort of on a, based on its own merits. We've had a Vernon, there's another one down at Victoria Park, can't think of the last name right now, but it's up by the Ballfield Clubhouse.
Okay.
So there's one as well, the Charlie Ryan, one that's down at Memorial, next to Memorial Field. So, yeah, and there's other ones that, that up to jog my memory, but yeah, so the, as each ones come in, we've dealt with them on their own merits, but like you said, right now, it's potentially, there's going to be more requests. I know the recent one with the other, the MAD request, so, you know, it makes sense in the, if a notice of motion comes, that we work on putting a policy in place for sure. But in the absence of a policy, we've been dealing with them over the years as, as they've come in, and, you know, weighed them on their own merits and brought forward a recommendation to whichever lead department would bring forward the recommendation, and then it would be brought down, brought to council for their final decision.
So we have the Chairs in King's Square. The Chairs, the historic Chairs, that was a monument that was set up in King's Square back in 210 or 214.
That makes sense around that time, yes.
Okay, Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, and I recall, this was deferred, you know, last month because it wasn't sure it went through Heritage or not, and we see now that Confederation Center is not a Heritage Park. I think sometimes we can get tied up too, too much in, I guess, red tape. I mean, we've, as the Parks Manager just said, we've done a number of monuments in the past. This went through the committees. It was agreed that this was a good monument to put in. I don't think we need to stall it. I think the monument goes ahead. You want to create, create a policy if moving forward from here on out? Fill your boots. But I think these people have been waiting for a while. It's gone through the committees, so let's move this ahead, and then the city can create a policy. Thank you.
Counselor Twill?
Just want to respond to the amendment, the amendment in terms of timeframe? Is that what you were looking for? What? No, it's my second time on the deferral. This is...
This is your second time, third time speaking. This is his third. Go ahead.
But I'm responding to the Deputy Mayor's question. So Deputy Mayor Yankoff, so you're questioning about the timeframe for the development of the policy? The motivation behind the deferral to have, have the policy in place is so that, we're not here to vote yes or no to the Ukrainian community. I'm trying to be proactive so that we have a policy in place. And yes, Frank outlined what was done years ago. I mean, Charlie Ryan, that was done forty years ago. Okay? This is a different climate today in terms of requests that are coming in. I read the article that was in the paper about MAD. There was a big article in the newspaper. That's what motivated me to send the email in. So in fact, it had nothing to do with the Ukrainian community. It had, it had more to do with MAD. So that's why I wrote the, wrote the email. So, so just trying to be proactive here. I don't want to be in a position where we're voting yes or no, because I don't think that's, that's what we're about here. Okay? I moved the deferral so that it gave our staff time to develop a policy.
Yep.
So that, so that, so that it's clearly, clearly identified as to what the prerequisites are. I thought it was being proactive, but I guess you're not supposed to be proactive around here.
No, 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 no. At MAD, just again, for clarification, MAD was going on historical Victoria Park. This is a different situation, okay? No, no. That, there is a policy. Victoria Park, there's the Victoria Park Bylaw. That's what there is. And that's why it went to Heritage Board, and Heritage Board deferred it until they come back with more information. So you're not comparing apples to apples. We found out, as Counsel Bernard said, and that's why I voted on the resolution, the Thai resolution, because it was the heritage issue. Is this property heritage? That's why I voted in favor to stay the course, and then now this comes up. So again, two different issues. Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, as I, as I sit here and hear different perspectives and, and different opinions on, you know, what we're doing here this evening, you know, I can certainly appreciate all the, the work that has been done thus far to get to where the Ukrainian community is here this evening. And, you know, and I think by all intents and purposes, nobody wants, doesn't want to see this go forward, and, and me included. So, you know, and I, my comments were more about, I think we, we have gaps in our policies, we're missing certain policies, and I think we need to move that forward. You know, I, I'd like to see, you know, and thinking about this, like, I'm not sure if this is tonight where we want to, for me now, it's like, is this the one where we're going to say no to, and then, but I think everything afterwards, I, you know, we, like, we can't just come here again in six, seven months and have the same discussion and debate that, you know, we should have had six or seven months earlier. But, you know, I think it's been loud and clear here this evening to the CAO and to the administration that we need the policy, and we need to get something in place really quickly. And, you know, I, I don't know if it makes any difference, you know, for me now in, in the sense of if we hold off and, and wait, because that could be months and months and months before a policy like that is developed. And I, you know, I know I'm a matter of principle. I think we need to have that, but in hearing even what the manager Frank said, you know, we have lots that have come in and, and that have gone through. So this might be, I guess, for me, the last one that get, that goes through until there's actually any policy or procedure in place. So thank you.
Okay, Counsel McCabe?
My second time, yeah, thanks, because we've spent forty minutes discussing whether or not we should have a monument for a very important cause put into our parks. And to me, that just tells us that why, you know, we're debating who should and who shouldn't. Again, another reason why we should have policy. This shouldn't have to take forty minutes to decide whether or not we're going to put monuments in. It should be really clear, and that is our job as governance, is to establish those. You made a comment, Your Worship, that this could come back in a month, where you were going to come back with this policy in a month. Is that in the plan where this is in the works?
No, there's a notice of motion from.
Okay. So is it really going to take that long? We've already indicated this, this community's been waiting in the, in the hub for quite a while. What's one more month or two more months to make sure it fits criteria?
But we have to develop the policy.
Right.
And that, to develop that policy in a jurisdictional, and looking at a jurisdictional scan.
Okay, but it's going to snow.
You want to, you want to make sure there's time that goes into this, and I think.
You want to make sure it's done properly based on what our criteria is going to be.
And I, and I think we should be working with our two sister communities, Cornwall and Stratford, and develop a policy that's for the whole region. This is what, what we want to do. More shared services, strong government. Thank you. Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to second Mitchell's, or Counselor Twill's, I'm sorry, his resolution, because again, I want to make it crystal clear. This is not about the application or others that might be in the hopper now, because if we say yes to one now, then we're going to turn around and say, well, there's a couple others that were in the hopper, so we should say yes, even though we haven't developed a policy. Good governance means policy. So I will second the deferral, and, and if that doesn't go through, then I will have no choice but to not support tonight's resolution. But hopefully, council will see this as an opportunity so that the Ukrainian community is not feeling a no. They're, they're seeing a not yet.
Yeah. Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm just kind of wondering, geez, is there something wrong with this monument? Is there something that people have against this?
Not okay.
I don't know. What do you mean it's not okay? We put, we put lots of, we put lots of monuments up.
What's your point of order?
Is there something wrong with this particular monument?
Uh, what is it?
It is not accurate or fair to suggest that my position or anyone else's.
I'm just asking the question.
Reflects a lack of support for the Ukrainian people. My decision tonight is based solely on process.
Yep. We never made a decision yet.
We didn't make, yeah.
So I'm just asking the question.
Okay.
We've had lots of monuments in the past. This seems to fit all, fit, this gone through the committees. I'm not against putting up, bringing up a policy or creating a policy. To me, it's just another delay. If there's something wrong here that, that's, if there's an elephant in the room, somebody, somebody bring it up, because everything I've read here, it's a good monument to put up. So I don't think there's anything wrong with proceeding with to put the monument up, but proceed with your, your policies in the future. Thank you.
Counsel Ramsey, you want to wrap it up?
Yes, please. As you say, this was in, in the works for three or four, four or five months. I can't remember how long it was, but at the same time, we approved the deferral in our last meeting to find out if it was in, under heritage property and if there's a policy. We, it came back, there's no policy, and it's not an heritage property. So what we're voting on is this, on this resolution right here, and to make a long story short, why don't we just put the vote up there right now, Your Worship, and see who's for and who's against the resolution?
You calling the question?
I'll call the question, sir.
Question's called, okay.
On the deferral, on the deferral, who's in favor of the deferral?
Counsel Dron, yea or nay?
Nay.
Okay. Who's in favor of the, sorry, who's against the deferral?
Against.
Yeah. Against the deferral?
In favor.
Yeah. Counsel Dron?
In favor.
Okay. Okay, so we're back to the, at the original resolution. What? Seven, three. Yeah, question's called. No questions called. Who's all in favor of the resolution that our CAO wrote out? Please raise your hand. Favor the resolution for the council approves Confederation Landing as the location to install the Holomador Commemoration Monument. Put up your hand.
No.
No, the, the vote's on the floor. Counsel Dron, yea or nay? Yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, those against? Okay. Motion carried. Is that it? Is that it?
To make comments?
Yep, well, you can make it in the next resolution. Frank, anything else?
No, I just, just a question.
Okay. We have four A, we're going back to four A, which is the ten-year active transportation plan. Is that correct? Yes? Anna, you are here. Do you have someone online?
Yes, we have Nick Sully, who is our consultant from WSP on the line, and I think he's going to be sharing his screen through Teams, so that'll be broadcast on the video. And once I see that up, I suppose I, well, I'll begin, and, and he can figure out the broadcast of that. And then I'll just introduce, and then I'll hand.
And can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Nick. Thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
Great. So I'll just introduce, and then I'll hand over to Nick. He is an active transportation specialist in WSP's Active Transportation Unit, and it's been a real pleasure to work with them over the last, I think it's nine months now to create, to get to this point where we're very close to finalization of the next ten-year active transportation plan. Active transportation refers to both human-powered and low-speed electrically assisted mobility. It includes walking and cycling. Those are probably the two main modes, but also using a wheelchair or other assistive mobility devices, skateboarding, rollerblading, roller skates, all that fun stuff. The key is that it's human scale and human speeds. Today, we'll be presenting an outline of the full active transportation plan, the process from here. After we present this outline tonight, by Monday of next week, we will have published on charlottetownhall.ca the full active transportation plan draft. It'll be about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty pages. The finishing touches are just being put on it this week. And then there'll be one full month for council and the public to be able to read through, fully digest that document, ask us questions as staff to clarify, before we bring it back to the Environment and Sustainability Committee, where they will deeply consider it and consider a motion to council for adoption, which will then come back to council as part of the regular meeting in November. So this evening is just for information and an outline of what to expect in that full active transportation plan. So I'll start with what we've done to get to this point. There have been three phases, and we're going to make this quick because I know that it's a long meeting agenda tonight. There have been three phases. In the first phase, starting in November last year, we did a background review. We assessed the current state of active transportation infrastructure in Charlettown against national engineering standards, and we set up our advisory committees, the Technical Advisory Committee and the Public Advisory Committee, the PAC and TAC. In the second phase, we developed proposals both for hard infrastructure and for policies and programs to support active transportation growth in the city. And we held our first open house for the public, as well as more engagement with our PAC and TAC advisory committees. In the third phase, we began drafting the plan, pulling all of that input together. We held a second open house to, to show, you know, the updated networks that we were presenting to the public, and then we've worked through the process of developing, very close to now the final language, which will be shared on charlottetownhall.ca this week. This work builds upon two previous plans, and so the last active transportation plan for Charlettown also was a collaboration with the town of Cornwall and the town of Stratford and the province, and it was 2012, the Regional Active Transportation Plan. The recommendations from that plan have largely been completed and implemented now. That includes the multi-use path across the Hillsborough Bridge and also across the North River Causeway, as well as key pieces of infrastructure like the bypass highway. But we still realized upon completing that work that we needed interconnections, not just between communities, but also within communities. And so Bike Friendly Communities, a local advocacy group, did a lot of work in 2021 and 2022 to craft a recommendation to the city that resulted in their early 2023 Capital Region Active Transportation Plan and a proposal for a fully interconnected network that evolves in phases. We provided that BFC plan to WSP as their starting point for our next ten-year plan. WSP has added detail. They've added costing and the engineering rigor on top of the vision that Bike Friendly Communities established. All of the two thousand points of public input from Bike Friendly Communities' consultation in 2022 were provided to WSP. We added more public consultation on top of that. And so this plan with WSP is about taking that community-led and locally-created vision through the engineering rigor required to convert it to budgets and to hard infrastructure, and ultimately to become reality. How we engaged the community, as previously mentioned, there were two open houses. They were both in-person and virtual for people who couldn't make it physically, and a hundred people came out to participate, including many of you counselors, came to those events at the Library and Simmons Arena. There was also a survey that gathered four hundred responses. There was a map that was published on which people could place pins and comments on the maps that were proposed, and there was the PAC and TAC advisory committees. And each of those committees had sixteen members. The Public Advisory Committee representing civil society and businesses in the cycling and accessibility space, and the Technical Advisory Committee having representatives of five different city departments and four different provincial government departments. At this stage, I'll hand over to Nick, and he'll take you through the key themes and recommendations that you'll see in the first few chapters of the AT plan.
Thanks, Anna, and hi, everyone, again, for those that I've met already. So the, the key themes coming here, that public consultation and what we heard from our public advisor committees and technical advisor committees were really around four areas. One of them was around year-round maintenance, and this might have had to do with, somewhat with when we had hosted those meetings, because snow clearing was obviously on the top of mind because people were struggling with it throughout the winter, which is a very real struggle. So that's one of those key themes. The network itself, making those connections, the key spine routes like the Confederation Trail and other facilities that have been built throughout the city with good quality and safe facilities, focused on road safety and, and user education, both in terms of drivers and our transportation users. So we're, they're using the network rate, as well as providing amenities that support wayfinding, such as bike parking, something we heard about a lot, as well as wayfinding signage, so people can find their way throughout the network. We developed this long list of goals. This is included in the, the AT plan as well, so we don't need to read them all right here, but really focusing around connecting with transit, having good active transportation facilities, amenities, and both using active transportation as a way to reduce demands around parking pressure by encouraging residents to use active transportation and reducing demands on traffic by using active transportation as well. When we looked at everything that we'd heard, we developed this vision statement in collaboration with the, the city staff and, and community members and with input from the public. And that vision statement reads that we envision a vibrant, healthy, and sustainable city where active transportation is a preferred year-round transportation option for all, with infrastructure that serves the needs of all community members, where safety, maintenance, and education is prioritized, with provincial support and community collaboration. Active transportation in the city of Charlettown is safe and enjoyable with seamless intermodal connections and accessible and affordable transportation options. And I really want, pause here to emphasize that some of the phrasing around here, making sure that it's a transportation option for all and serves the needs of all community members. So in developing this plan, we made sure to consider the needs of everyone and really take an equity-focused approach to make sure that what we're planning here is, is comfortable and appropriate and serves the needs of everyone within the city. So in looking at the, the current state of active transportation in the city, that will be found in chapter two of the plan, we looked at both the, the existing network and what is, what has previously been, been done for active transportation facilities, as well as reviewing sort of the demographic conditions and the transportation demands throughout the city in terms of where you're seeing high traffic on roads, high speed, stuff like that. And what we really want to emphasize here is, in this graphic on the right, you'll see in the plan as well, looking at where there are a high number of active transportation commuters currently within the city coming from census data. And what we'll see is that about, within the range of, of say, twenty-two to forty-five percent of people within the downtown core are currently using active transportation to commute, which was quite, which was nice to see and, and might be surprising to some, because you can see that when there are those facilities, the sidewalks, the bike lanes and stuff like that, people will use active transportation. So really, this is about expanding to the rest of the city with, with good, high-quality facilities. And within that percentage, it says AT commuters, so that does include people walking, and that's likely the current largest share of that group, where a smaller percentage would be biking. But it's easy to shift those, those trips to biking from when you have those very short trips for commutes. And the other key thing that we looked in this chapter was about reviewing the existing network. So we want to review existing bike lanes and pathways within the city against sort of best practice. against sort of best practices internationally and nationally for where those types of facilities are appropriate. And what we often found was that where there are just painted bike lanes currently or a shared lane with vehicle traffic that's designated for active transportation or cycling, those typically aren't compliant with best practices currently. So what we see there is that there's an opportunity to upgrade those facilities, maybe make those bike lanes more protected, or include approaches to slow down vehicle traffic in those shared lanes so there's a low risk of any injuries occurring. Chapter three is all about design guidelines in our ATP. So you see a couple of examples here of protected bike lanes, where you have some separation between the bike lane and the vehicle lane with some concrete or hard ballards, as well as separated bike paths. And that's where the bike path is above the level of the roadway and the boulevard, but it's still separate from the sidewalk, so pedestrians and cyclists have their own space. And in developing these design guidelines, we really wanted to focus on eliminating or very much reducing the risk of severe and fatal injuries happening on the roadways within the city. So this graph demonstrates that. And what you see on this graph is, let me just see if I can do a laser pointer here, yeah. Once we hit speeds of vehicles operating between thirty and forty kilometers per hour, these lines really shoot up to a higher risk of injury occurring. And each of these lines represents minor injuries, severe injuries, and then fatal injuries. So what we want to say is, when we see those speeds of forty to fifty kilometers per hour or higher for motor vehicles, that's where we really want to be separating the active transportation users from those vehicles. But if we have a local road or a neighbourhood roadway, we don't want anyone on those roadways to feel like they have a risk of injury as well. So when we have those and it's a constrained space or a local neighbourhood where kids might be playing in the street, you really want those speeds for vehicles to be around the thirty kilometer per hour mark or lower through traffic calming measures. So when we see, and through our design guidelines, we said when we have that very low risk and low speeds for vehicles, that's where it's appropriate for someone walking or cycling or playing in the street to share the lanes with those motor vehicles. So that's what we'd want to target on our local streets. When we get to those busier roadways and that are meant to carry traffic and the speed is about fifty kilometers per hour or more, that's where we need to see some physical separation to prevent those vehicles from entering the bike lane and potentially severely injuring or resulting in a fatal injury of someone using a bike or walking. And that sort of informed us on how we develop our AT network. So our active transportation network is going to be made up of a combination of both those physically separated facilities on our flow network and the major trailways on our flow network that are meant to get people across the city along their commutes and to major destinations while on our low-stress network on local streets and more minor trails. That's where we want to make sure that speeds are very low for people driving through those neighbourhoods. There's no one taking shortcuts through those neighbourhoods and potentially using streets where kids are playing or biking or something like that. And we want to make sure that any vehicle on that street is going very slowly and that there's no cut-through. So in that, we've developed a series of route types for this network that are going to connect with our policies, where the spine routes carry the highest, likely highest volumes of cyclist and active transportation users. Our feeder routes are carrying lower and trying to get people onto those spine routes mainly. And then our local routes through our local neighbourhoods, trying to reduce the vehicle volumes and providing a safe and comfortable place where someone might be sharing a lane. But there's very little to absolutely no risk of severe injury because the motor vehicle speeds are going to be very low there. We developed this network hierarchy on a map, which is going to be hard to see on your screens, but it's going to be in a report, so I'm not going to dwell too much on here. But you'll see that these green routes here are spine routes, like the Confederation Trail right here. We have our connector routes getting people onto those spine routes and then that series of local routes in the purple lines there. I've mentioned-
Nick? Nick?
Yes?
Can you just, councillor Twill has an urgent question, do you?
Okay.
Do you mind taking one? And Nick, I was told about your best friend. Our condolences and sympathies with you.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Councillor Twill.
Nick, thank you for your presentation thus far. If you don't mind, Nick, can you go back to the line items that you had in terms of what your terms of reference is in developing this plan? If you can go back three or four slides.
Do you have those, Anna? What page?
Just a couple more-
I'm not sure which page you're referring to.
The one where you had a bunch of line items.
Oh, our goals and here?
Yeah, right there, right there.
Or key?
No, back, right there. So one of the challenges that we've been facing and the neighbourhoods and communities have been facing is the amount of development, residential development, multi-layers of development, apartment buildings, and the intensity of that development. Yet at the same time, there's no active transportation pathway on that particular side. And I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to look at Mount Edward Road, but we have public meetings to approve these developments. We have residents that come to our meetings and state quite clearly and unequivocally, there's no venue, there's no facility, there's nothing where they can commute quite safely and predictably up and down Mount Edward Road. And then I noticed later on in your presentation, you talked about the speed when you get up into Mount Edward Road, for example. Some of that traffic travels at about fifty and sixty, sometimes seventy kilometres. And the type of traffic, the type of traffic, Nick, is very important because it's industrial, commercial, service, and then residential traffic. So I wonder, in your prerequisites, have you taken that into consideration with respect to your goals? Have you looked at, you know, this major development that's taking place, like Mount Edward Road, for example? And have you looked at that with a different set of lens to ensure that-
Absolutely, so-
I'm sorry? No.
Go ahead, sorry.
I think that's very important because that is a message that I keep hearing consistently, time in and time again. And that's one of the things, one of the questions I wanted to ask you tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. So we definitely took a look at how the city's developing and what types of policies we can include with new development going on. So my understanding that the official plan is being updated currently or has just, is quite close to being updated. So we've included policies in our plan here that will help inform that update and that date to the zoning and development bylaw on how we can integrate good quality active transportation with these new developments. And I'll have that later on in our slides here, too. But we also had to make some tough choices on certain roads on where we can prioritise routes to make the budget for installing them go the furthest. So in that case, Mount Edward Road, for example, it's not going to be in our short-term plan because we see that there's the Confederation Trail just to the west. And our priority is going to say, okay, let's try and make as many of those connections to the Confederation Trail because there's an existing active transportation spine right there. So you'll see more east-west connections in the short term, connecting people to the trail. And then we also have some connecting to Maple Avenue as well, which has very wide bike lanes, which could be quite easily retrofitted with some protection to make them into protected bike lanes and provide another really good connection for active transportation users that's less costly to install than it would be to install similar barrier, similar facilities on Mount Edward Road. So we're both trying to make sure that we have a good short-term network that gets people to high-priority locations, while we're also trying to make sure that the budget that we have for active transportation facilities goes the furthest and that we can expand that network as fast as possible in the short term. If you don't mind, do you mind if I continue with the presentation? And maybe we can get to some of those questions and discussion points at the end?
Councillor Twill, just finish up with one question-
Yeah, 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 I will finish up. So, you know, with all due respect, Nick, major development is taking place to, close to Mount Edward Road. And people are commuting up and down Mount Edward Road. We have other amenities on Mount Edward Road, like the Mount and other facilities. We have a church. And, you know, residents have said this over and over again, that it's not safe on Mount Edward Road and your vehicle traffic. And I outlined the different dynamics of that vehicle traffic. So I'm going to ask you if you reconsider the short-term plan or the short-term plan. And maybe if you'd like, I'll even take you on a walk or attempt to walk on the west side of Mount Edward Road to clearly illustrate just how dangerous it is on that street.
Yeah, it's, I definitely understand your concerns there. And Anna led us on a great bike tour around of all the different places in the city where we're considering routes. And Mount Edward Road was on that bike tour, so we got to experience it firsthand, for sure. And it's a difficult road and it's very challenging. And we want to connect people to those destinations as best we can and as many destinations as we can. So it might not be specific roads that can be accelerated to the short term based off of our prioritisation because it's going to mean taking something away from somewhere else. And then we won't be able to create safe connections there while we can create some safe connections to those destinations on Mount Edward with east-west routes between the Confederation Trail and Maple Avenue.
Yeah. And Nick, I'll let you get back to your presentation. Do you want us to go to, what page were we at, Anna? Digitally?
I think we're at map four point three, the network hierarchy.
Thank you.
Yes.
Page fourteen or fifteen of the package.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll try and quickly run through the rest of our slides here until I pass it back to Anna around our policies and programming section. So just going over our facility types that we'll be recommending through here, too, on local street bikeways and painted bike lanes. Painted bike lanes you're quite familiar with, but local street bikeways are an emerging facility type across Canada. I see a lot of them on the west coast currently. Ontario's building more and more, and Halifax is building more and more. So we're recommending that facility type for Charlottetown, too. And it might be where we have traffic calming measures to make sure that traffic is slowed down, again, aiming for that thirty kilometer per hour mark to reduce the risk of injury. And if there's a lot of cut-through traffic on a street, including a way to divert that vehicle traffic off of that road and make sure that it's using the road network and the main arterial roads where the traffic's supposed to be and not cutting through a neighbourhood. And then some other facility types, so multi-use pathways you'll be quite familiar with in the city as well, as many have been built recently. Our separated bike pathways, which I'd shown on the other slide, again, above the road surface and then a buffer away from the road. And then protected bike lanes, so that's including those concrete barriers and hard ballards to prevent vehicles entering the bike lane. And then, again, we have a map presented here on where those existing facilities are and where the proposed facilities are to go in our plan. So just getting to our implementation plan here, we really wanted to focus on where we see a high potential for creating cycling trips. So that might be looking at existing travel trends in the city where there's current trips under, say, like, the five-kilometer mark occurring. And those are the types of trips that could be easily shifted towards active transportation because they're quite short. So looking at that and other factors related to things like population density, we came up with that prioritisation on the right here. And you can see in the darker purple colours that it really pops up around downtown, going up University Avenue, North River Road, and then going to the north-east along St Peters. The other thing that we want to look at is where there is a strong need for active transportation options. So these look at other indicators such as people who might not have access to a vehicle or are living in low-income situations and factors related to transportation affordability. So when we look at those indicators, we see very similar trends, again, of a high need for active transportation going up that North River Road and University Avenue area, along St Peters and downtown as well. So in developing that, we developed a phasing plan, which I will have on the next slide, of short-term being zero to five years, medium being five to ten, and long being ten plus. What you'll see here is that the longest routes are, or the longest length phase is in the short term because we're prioritising those facilities that can be easily upgraded with quick build and more affordable measures and where a lot of those local street bikeways are located because those aren't as expensive as building a brand-new multi-use path or a brand-new separated bike pathway. And that's not to say that there aren't some of those in short term, but the ones that are in short term, the routes that are in short term, we had to look at that, how we can expand the cycling network as much as possible while working within our targets for budgets and funding sources from other funding locations. So we wanted to look at what that could, what sort of our budget is currently and what this might do to, or where the financial need might be going forward. So within this current cycling budget or budget spent on cycling projects within the city, we estimated that to be about two point five million. So that excludes sidewalks, sidewalks projects aren't included, but includes a lot of things like where the new multi-use paths were. So we saw on average within the past few years, that was what was being spent on those. And in developing this planned network that we have over the next, say, fifteen years, maybe more, it comes out to approximately a fifty percent increase in that financial, those financial costs. But we did include a number of funding sources from the provincial government and the federal government that could be used to help make up that difference in terms of budgets and funding sources. So here we have our network phasing plan. Again, so you'll see short-term being the thicker lines in the purple colour, medium-term being the slightly thinner lines in green, so some of those extending, like, up some of those major roadways because, again, we had to make those hard decisions on trying to make the connections between places like schools and stuff over some other major roadways, for example. And then our long-term being the thinner blue lines. And you'll see a lot of those are outside of the arterial highway because, going back to our prioritisation there, we really did see the priorities being within the arterial highway. And I'll pass it back to Anna here to speak about the policy pieces and the programming pieces.
Cool, I'll try to whip through these next few chapters. So chapter six, when you dive into the full plan, it addresses the maintenance policy, both summer and winter policies to get us up to an expected standard, to make our great facilities usable in all seasons. We look at amenities to support active transportation, not just the pathways, but the bike parking, rest areas, garbage bins, all of those sorts of things, water stations. And then the development policy. And this is where, speaking to councillor Twill's question earlier, we're in a great situation where this plan is coming just as the zoning and the development bylaw is being written, which will operationalise the vision of active transportation in the official plan so that when there are new developments, we don't just suggest to the developers that they put in multi-use paths, but they're actually required to do so. And when there are multi-unit buildings going up, that they're required to put in bike parking, both for visitors outdoors and locked bike storage within buildings for the residents of those buildings. We also have recommendations in chapter six for issues that are outside of city control and that are part of the Provincial Highway Traffic Act. There are recommendations that the city may like to pursue in advocacy to the province for changes to the type- for changes to the types of lights and bike signals that are allowed at intersections, and also changes to legalize common cyclist behaviors that actually do increase both the actual safety and sense of safety, but which are currently outside of the highway code. For example, riding to a breast or doing what's called an Idaho stop at stop signs, that's a slow and intentional slowdown, but where you're actually allowed to roll through. It's proven to increase safety and decrease collisions for cyclists at intersections. There's also a very interesting discussion section on helmets, which are mandatory in this province and other Atlantic provinces, but which are not mandatory, and they have different approaches in other provinces of Canada, and how we might like to add nuance to that law. And I know that that may be controversial. I encourage people to read the section and to bring any concerns that they have around that to staff and to the Environment Sustainability Committee meeting in late October. And then there's also recommendations about cycling on sidewalks being allowed and the conditions and the nuanced situations where that should and should not be allowed, and there's a limited degree to which that is allowed under the Highway Traffic Act, should Charlottetown pass a bylaw for children under 12. So, there's, that's some of what you can expect in chapter six. Chapter seven deals with programming, not just the hard infrastructure, but how we engage with the community around active transportation through fix-it fairs, supporting community bike shops, bike buses, the program is going really well this year, walking school buses, and other education programs. In chapter seven, you'll also see a proposal for the bike share, the concept that we are developing and still hoping to roll out next year for two years. We have the first proposal for an actual map of where the initial bike share stations would be located to maximize coverage from those communities most likely to use a bike share system. Chapter eight deals with wayfinding, and so that's a system, once we have the hard infrastructure, how will people find it? How, you know, we have, I think, when we're driving, we intuitively use the wayfinding system when they say, you know, turn left in 500 meters to get to Stratford, and then there is a sign to confirm it. We need that for active transportation users as well, so that they don't have to memorize their whole route before they set off and have to stop and check their phone on the way. So, we've got examples of designs for signs and plans for where they would be located. And chapter nine deals with monitoring. Through the process of creating this plan, we became aware that, you know, the data that Charlottetown has around active transportation is quite limited. We've improved the data through, you know, some of the work that we've done in the last, you know, nine months together, but to do things like counting our AT users habitually, monitoring the usage of bike parking, doing regular opinion surveys, monitoring travel trends through the census, and then also collecting other data that's not, because in the census, they only count commutes to work, but there's other data that we can have on commutes to school or education institutions, to grocery trips, and so on. So, there's a whole section on that. And then the final slide is just a reminder of the next steps, so we'll have it published this week. There'll be four weeks for council and the public to digest, ask any questions, and then we'll be taking it back through committee for recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna, and thank you, Nick. Thank you very much. I think there must be some questions. I know that Counsel Rebecca is a cyclist. E-biker yet?
Yeah.
Counsel McKinnon is an e-biker. Okay, Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Nick and Anna, for your presentation. It's a lot of information. Back on, just a question on chapter two, I think it was page six on our electronic version. It showed the north end of my ward. It said 0% of commuters. Is that because there's no bike lanes coming in from? Because we do have transit out there, so I'm just curious. We had the color of 0% for commuters coming from the north end.
Yes, that's a great question. So, that would have been in the most recent census data, and that would be for commutes to work. And so, I'm guessing, like, there are probably not a lot of employment destinations within your area, and there are also a limited number of existing active transportation facilities that people might use. So, the number of people who walk to work or who cycle to work might be so low as to not be detected on the census.
And this is all, I want to add that this is all counted where people live. So, if you don't have a whole lot of density within your ward as well, then the number might be so low that the census sometimes rounds down to keep the numbers generalized, because they can't provide numbers, specific numbers, for areas with a very low population, because that's a, I believe that's an issue with data privacy.
Yep, and one other aspect to consider is the distances. Charlottetown is a small town, and generally, for active transportation, we have a very, very good uptake of walking if you live within two kilometers of your workplace or three kilometers, but if you're living between three and seven kilometers from your workplace, which would be the vast majority of the population of Charlottetown, that's where walking is too far, but cycling would be less than a 20-minute journey. And so, by completing the network, we hope to be able to facilitate active transportation trips for people who are living that sort of distance from their workplace, and that would be the majority of people in Charlottetown, and a real contributor to shifting modal share away from cars to reduce our traffic congestion, particularly in the summer when our tourist season arrives. That just so happens to also be the season for peak active transportation usage because of how beautiful the weather is.
Counsel Beck?
Yeah, thank you, Anna, and Nick, for your presentation, and I think I've expressed my enthusiasm for this type of project on various occasions, and I'm glad to see that a lot of the good work that has been done is still being built upon and put into the final product that we have coming. I do have a few questions from different pages, if I could go through them one at a time with you. My first one is on page six, and it was talking about road safety and education. I've had a lot of conversations with residents recently about speeding, speed and speed zones within neighborhoods. I've had discussions with our current CAO, former police chief, had conversations with our manager of public works as well, too, as well as with many residents on this topic. And I'm wondering, one of the things that gets talked about is that 30-kilometer-hour speed zone within neighborhoods. And I know there's different schools of thought, and there's different kind of visions of how that could or could not unfold. Is that something that's going to be recommended in this report, that we look at reducing neighborhood zones to 30 kilometers? You know, you referenced earlier about how the higher-speed zones would need either separated bike lanes or bollards and that sort of thing. But within the neighborhoods, are we looking at, is this something that's going to be coming forth in this report? I'm just curious about that.
I'll let you take that, Nick.
Okay, in this sense, there are different senses on the way that we're doing that. So, the 30-kilometer-per-hour zone, that's definitely going to be recommended as part of the local street bikeway facility types, because they're including design as a way to make sure that low speed is enforced. Sometimes a sign doesn't necessarily mean that someone's going to drive at that speed. We often find that around education and enforcement might be the lower effective ways of reducing speeds, but when you do it through design, that's a more effective way to make sure that everyone's being, everyone's slowing down and driving at appropriate speed. So, we have the recommendation for where local street bikeways are going to be. And then we're also making some specific recommendations around all local streets for having them reviewed, and as they come up for reconstruction, making sure that they're designed for that speed. So, again, trying to do this through design, because it's more effective than doing it through enforcement and education as a way to make sure that vehicles are driving at an appropriate speed. And then we also have some more general recommendations about reviewing largely around downtown, because a lot of the downtown streets are being used to carry a lot light traffic. If you go east-west through downtown, you have multiple streets that really have been designed historically to carry a large number of vehicles. So, we want to, we're recommending that the city has a follow-up to this, because it wasn't within our timeline to be able to complete a comprehensive review, but review the downtown road classifications and really have a focus on deciding which roads are intended to carry vehicles and buses, which roads are intended to be comfortable for cycling and comfortable for walking, and people using it as a place rather than as a street to just travel through, with the importance that downtown and downtown businesses play in the city.
Okay, thank you. My next one is on page 18. And it was talking under the implementation plan and prioritization strategy, and it was referring to higher equity need. What does that mean exactly?
I'm on the wrong page here, I think.
Chapter five, implementation.
They have one extra page than you do, Nick.
Sorry.
Yeah, oh, I see. I see, okay. So, we used to determine where there's going to be a higher need for transportation options. We complete what's called an equity score analysis. So, that's taking into a lot of factors, factors related to, say, household income, the number of, or the frequency of sort of high school completion rates, because we see that there's better outcomes when someone completes high school, indicators related to, like, to social development and pieces like that, because those indicators are really connected with equity, which is connected to the need for transportation. So, if you see people living in lower incomes or might not have as similar access as the jobs or are underemployed, a car suddenly can become very unaffordable, because it's still quite a significant expense for some people in the city. So, when we see that, that's where we're expecting there to be a higher need for people for more affordable transportation options, which is exactly what walking and cycling are. They can be very affordable, and combined with some of the other programs that we're recommending here, they can be very, at very low cost to the user through things like the fix-it fairs to help repair their bikes and maintain and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you. Next page, on page 19, under the phasing plan. Just going back to the cost for a minute, so are we looking at 3.9 million per year for the 10-year duration of that plan? Is that the, is that the cost that we're looking at with that? You were, I mean, this is, part of this is phasing out the cost of it, but is that what it is?
Yes.
And then looking within that $40 million or $3.9 million, there will be external funding sources available to offset that cost?
Yeah, absolutely.
To get it back maybe towards what we're currently budgeting in the $2.5 million? Is that right?
We're saying on average, it's 3.9, so that includes long-term, so it might be a little bit more or a little bit less, but it's around there, and we'll have a more detailed breakdown in the plan document itself. And, yeah, absolutely, keep, there's lots of funding sources out there. I think the city is recently receiving a bit through the province and has received funding through the federal government as well for projects. So, it's, that helps bring the cost down, but I can't say that that's going to cover the entire difference between those two numbers there. It might cover part of it or some of it, but it might be sort of an annual consideration for how much more there might be needed to top up that amount based off of funding sources. And I may pass it over to Anna to see if she has any thoughts on that, or Jessica, if she's in the room.
I'll just add to that, that the completion of this active transportation plan greatly increases our eligibility for applications to the Federal Active Transportation Fund, because one of the key criteria that they ask for for any project that you're putting for it is how does this relate to your broader vision for active transportation? And so, if we can make the case that we want this piece of infrastructure to connect, because this is phase one, and then we're going to be doing phase two in five and 10 years' time, it greatly increases the amount that we can get. There is currently, the Federal Active Transportation Fund is a fixed pot for all of Canada. Each municipality can request as much as they want. There is no local limit, but we just have to put in our requests, and then we're competing against every other municipality in Canada for our share of the pot. So, having this plan will help to make us eligible for getting a larger slice of that pie.
Okay, thank you very much. And just one final quick question. On that funding topic, the, on page 24, where we're talking about the proposed bike share program, which we approved a while ago, right? And is that funding going to still be available? Because you're looking at rolling that out next year. Is that funding still going to be, is that?
Yes.
Because I think there was a two-year funding of that pile of programs. Is that still going to be available?
Yes, both the provincial and federal funding is still available for the bike share program if we begin it next year. If we delay one further year, then we start to lose one of those pots.
Okay, thank you, I'm done. And thank you for your patience.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Anna and Nick, for the presentation, the information, and just on your last comment there, Anna, on the funding piece, and there's, you know, money available if you have a vision and a plan and phase two and what have you. Just on that, if that, does that funding tend to be typically 50/50, or what percent of your funding typically comes from that source?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but it is, it is written in there. I know that the provincial, actually, I do have it right in front of me, federal funding will cover up to 60% of capital cost design planning, and the provincial Active Transportation Fund will cover up to 50%, and we are able to stack those two funds. Generally, they wouldn't cover 100%, but there's stacking is allowed, I think, up to 90%, which is the case that we have with our bike share program. There's also funding through the Green Municipal Fund available for safe and active school routes, which I intend to apply for to enhance the routes that our bike bus schools are using to get to school. And having this active transportation plan will be a really great help in putting together those applications.
Okay, Debra Mary.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Anna and Nick. I'm just wondering, I know you touched on it a little bit in the report, but I'm wondering what opportunities, if you could just expand on it a little bit, for partnerships with schools, community groups, businesses to help promote and really support the active transportation plan? Through the, Your Worship to Anna.
Thank you. Do you want to start with this one, Nick?
Sure, yeah, and within the plan, we've talked a lot about partnerships and through the development of this, we've had some great conversations with members of the Public Advisory Committee, who are part of those cycling groups and part of those school organizations on how we can develop and create those partnerships. And I think in the development of this plan, that's a good first, like, a great first step in forming those partnerships going forward for the implementation and for implementing those programs. So, we've included pieces around with schools, for example, expanding bike buses and walking school buses, which are maybe not something that Charlottetown has yet, but we see quite often in other cities that work well, as well as things like school streets. So, with school streets, that involves taking a street sort of parallel or next to a school and trying to close that down to vehicles, so that reduce the risks of collisions or anything like that during school drop-off. And maybe it's once a day, a week, and then for that one day a week, then kids can walk from either end of the street to the school for drop-off there. And I think that there are a number of cities piloting that this school year. I can't remember if Charlottetown was part of that pilot or not, but there are a number of cities across Canada that just received funding for that program, and it's slowly being rolled out, and we're looking forward to seeing the outcomes of that. And in terms of, like, partnerships with community groups and biking groups, some of the key partnerships there are already in place and are already expanding. So, things like the fix-it fair, I think, Anna, you get some volunteers from cycling groups to help fix bikes for that, and we're recommending expansions of that, and a concept called community bike. that and a concept called Community Bike Shops where there's a physical location where, um, people help to repair bikes to those who don't know how to use, don't know how to do bike repairs and those might be stopped by volunteers from, uh, from those types of organizations and then, uh, initiatives like the pedal pole which is an annual count of the number of cyclists in a city, um, done nationally and I think, uh, bike-friendly communities has already been, uh, doing a bit of organizing or assisting perhaps, uh, what they said with that pedal pole, so let's continue on building those partnerships and making them stronger, uh, for the programs recommended, uh, in this plan.
Yep, and I'll just add to that, um, the Public Advisory Committee had sixteen members, it included UPEI, UPI Student Union, um, Bike Friendly Communities, Cycling PEI, Spinal Court Injury PEI, Fusion Charlottetown, Rising Tide Electric Bikes, Epic Electric Scooters, McQueens, the AT Coalition, um, Canadian National Institute for the Blind, and we intend to actually, even though this Public Advisory Committee was formed for the creation of the AT plan and, you know, we had three meetings and then we sort of stopped, now that the plan is finished, we do plan to invite the members of the Public Advisory Committee to continue in an advisory role, meeting with us three times per year and helping to hold us accountable to the goals and the implementation plan that is set so that we can update them on what our infrastructure plans are, why things are or are not happening as the plan changes and invite them to be involved in, um, celebrating and promoting that infrastructure as it's completed as well as advising us on the details of how it's designed.
Counsel Twill.
Just on your, uh, advisory committee that you outlined, um, I think it's great that, you know, there's different organizations on, on the committee, but here's what I find challenging, Anna, is that you have your advisory committee and then we represent people, we represent residents and what troubles me and, and when I say this with all due respect is when residents are telling us consistently, time in and time again, this needs to be a priority and then it doesn't seem to align with the advisory committee, so the question becomes, who do we as elected officials listen to? Do we listen to the advisory committee or do we listen to the respective residents that we represent because, you know, I'm, I'm just not seeing that line up and, and I'm not trying to be critical, I'm, I'm just trying to be consistent in representing the residents in the community and, and I find, this is what I find very troublesome, I really do.
Thank you Counsel Twill, so through you Chair, um, Mayor, um, I, I think I would love to have a sit-down and a detailed chat about Mount Edward Road and why it was prioritized in the way that it is and we can sort of show you some of the detailed connections, be very happy to take that, uh, outside of this meeting, um, and of course, the implementation of this plan, all of it depends on your approval as council every year through the budget process, allocating funds to each process and if you decide to allocate, to, to change the phasing, um, in this plan, you can do that, the, the AT plan is a ten-year vision, it is not, it doesn't commit us now to, like, by adopting the vision, it doesn't commit you to spending the money and building the infrastructure, that comes through annual, um, budget processes and you're very much entitled to bring forward and change, uh, the phasing as we go through the process, as new information emerges, as, um, development patterns change from the in- information that we have available to us now.
Counsel Twill.
Um, sure, I mean, I'll, I'll take anyone on a tour up and down Mount Edward Road and, and, uh, put on your safety vest because, because the amount of traffic and the type of traffic that's on that road, but, you know, when I heard Nick say earlier about, well, you know, the rails and trails, well, with all due respect to that, that's a simplistic approach because that's two and three hundred yards down to the rails and trails and how do you tell people that live on Mount Edward Road, especially these new developments, how are they supposed to get down on the rails and trails? They can't, I mean, what are they, supposed to rough it? I mean, go on a hiking trip, um, so the follow-up question is this, there's a plan, is the plan, just like the sidewalk plan, is that a plan that's etched in stone or is it a guide?
Etched in concrete.
It's a guide, um, and you all turn that into concrete through the, through the decisions that you make in the budgets each year and I would be very happy to show you the proposed connections that are east-west across, um, Mount Edward Road in phase one, um, that are available at lower cost, um, per kilometer.
Anna, as a cyclist, North River Road is a danger, Lower Marlpeck Road is a danger. I can name a number of north-south pathways, laneways that do have their challenges, but like Counsel Rebecca and Counsel McKinnon, uh, you have to ride with the, ride with the traffic and keep your eyes and ears open all the time, but I do, Nick, I do want to ask about, on page twenty-six, I don't know if it's the same, it's about collecting data in Waterloo, do you see that one?
Yep.
Yeah, so, first time I saw that, uh, type of, uh, data collector was in, in Victoria, BC, back in two thousand and nineteen, right down by the Empress, Empress Hotel, it's on the corner of Government and Worth Street, so does it pick up the data when someone rides by, like, what's, what's the, what's the function, how does it, how does it?
Yeah, my understanding of these, um, and I'm not just the expert on how these types of counters work, um, there is a sort of a fish-eye thing and a laser pointer that when you trip the la- laser pointer and you're going across it, that'll count a cyclist, so they'll have something across the pathway here to count people as they pass and that'll add one to the counter and my understanding is that they have some of these in Charlottetown already, um, the, the province does anyways, um, so they're collecting the data, but they just aren't displaying it in the same way as Waterloo is displaying it, um, because I think this is, uh, uh, like your Victoria example, it's, it's a high-frequency downtown area, uh, whereas the province, I think they have it on Hillsborough Bridge and somewhere along the Ontario Highway Pathway, um, but I forget the exact location that they mentioned.
We'll get Anna to find them, uh, Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, Your Worship, um, I just wondered, I know we touched on it again a little bit in this, but, um, how are we going to measure the success over the next ten years, more so for residents so that they can see the real impact?
Yeah, that's exactly what this slide is all about, it's, it's measuring the excess, uh, the, the, sorry, su- success, um, through each of these counts, so we want to make sure that the AT, the Active Transportation user counts are increasing year over year, um, so that might be looking at the annual pedal pole and see an increasing trend there and that could be measure of success, um, the use of bike parking, uh, making sure that, uh, one, it's accessible to people, um, that they know where to find it and that it's, it's in the right location so people are actually using it, um, that people are feeling safer, like, through those opinion surveys that the new facilities that are being implemented do feel safer to people than what's currently there, um, and I, I think we really want to make sure that, like, we, we're getting that travel data from schools and making sure that more and more children are, are walking and biking to schools rather than getting driven to schools, um, because it leads to healthier lifestyles and perhaps them being a bike commuter in the future as well, so I think, I think those are, are key measures of success, um, Anna, do you have any to add that you want to mention specifically?
Yeah, I would just add, as someone who, in my role, I'm responsible for both public transit and active transportation, um, Charlottetown currently has about eighty-five percent of people who get to work by driving and if we can, and it would be, you know, it's a little under ten percent who, um, use active transportation primarily walking to get to work and, you know, a small number, less than five percent, who use public transit to get to work and if through the course of my work on public transit and active transit, we can increase public transit by five percent and we can increase active transit by five percent, what that means is that we've reduced car traffic in the city by ten percent in total and if we do that, then we take out ten percent of the traffic coming into or through the city every day, we're freeing up thousands of parking spaces, we're reducing that congestion on North River Road and University and we're also enabling people to live, uh, you know, happy and healthy, active lifestyles where they're not having to pay to go to the gym to get the exercise, but they're, they're cycling, you know, fifteen minutes each way to work and it's incorporated into their daily, uh, routine, thank you.
So Deputy Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up, we all received a, a letter from Week Without Driving, it's from Transit Matters, Barbara Dilla, anyways, it's, "We are inviting you to take part in the Week Without Driving movement happening from Monday, September twenty-ninth to Sunday, October fifth, uh, during Week Without Driving, you can get around however you want, but the challenge, the challenge is not to drive yourself in any car, so public transit, cycling, walking," and I think Anna, this is a program that exists throughout the United States and this is what she sent out to all members of council if we're interested and use in that public transit. Any other questions? The only last, the last one I have is on page twenty-two in our, in our presentation, it's the helmet policy and this is where Anna and I differ a lot because, uh, Anna is a true cyclist and I'm sure you are too, Nick, but helmets are like si- seatbelts, they do save lives, so I am a proponent of this and, and I can tell you that it was only last fall that I had an accident and luckily I had my helmet on because that saved a lot of damage, so I, I, I just consider when helmets, helmets shouldn't and shouldn't be mandatory, well, they're mandatory and I know Kenny Murnian with, with, um, Brain Injury Free or Brain Injury Free, um, Association is a big advocate and, um, I'd like to keep pushing that, Deputy?
I just wondered through you Chair if Anna could expand a little bit on that because I know she's done quite a bit of research around the whole helmet thing and if you would, um, indulge us?
Sure, um, I'll start by saying that I don't think that PEI in Charlottetown is ready to change that law now or anytime probably in the next seven years, perhaps if we do full implementation of this policy, we may get to a point where we say that people who are cycling on roads where we have observed speeds, not just speed limits, but observed traffic speeds of less than thirty kilometers an hour, um, who are adults, not children, um, that rule could be relaxed. We are working with, uh, Kenneth Murnahan on, uh, student bike bus training, uh, this Saturday he'll be doing his helmet presentation, I'm a huge proponent of wearing helmets, the only question is whether people who are not wearing helmets should be fined for not doing so, um, and whether there are more effective ways to increase helmet-wearing and uptake without, um, deterring people from making the choice to cycle on safe and separated facilities. You can see in this image from Amsterdam that's, um, displayed on that, that same slide, um, you can see that in, you know, the top cycling cities in the world, um, that helmets are not mandatory, um, but, yeah, I don't think that we are ready to make that change imminently and we would only be ready to make that change, um, if we developed a very strong cycling culture with very, very well-protected infrastructure, so that's a change that would come after, um, we start to observe, um, higher numbers of cyclists on safe and protected infrastructure. Currently Ontario and Quebec, um, do not require helmets and also I think Manitoba and Alberta don't require them for adults and so we do see visitors and tourists arriving here, um, who are not expecting to need to wear them and there is evidence from countries that have introduced or taken away these laws that, um, when you require helmets, you do depress the overall number of cyclists and so you lose the public health benefits, um, from, that result from physical activity, um, but that being said, we need, um, to be reducing the incidence of cyclists encountering, um, cars before even considering making that change on PEI.
Thank you, and just as a follow-up, I know we have the law, but I don't believe it's enforced, um, so I guess, I think really what we're doing already now is really through education, is it not, Your Worship, um, to, to daunt Anna?
I know that we, we do have penalties for not wearing helmets.
Yeah, penalties, penalties are available and they're an option, I think we'd have to talk to, uh, the police about the capacity that they have to enforce this and the relative priority of enforcing this versus other types of laws.
Okay. And that is the Injury Free PEI associated with Kenny, Kenny Murnian. Okay, anything else? Nick, thank you very much for participating, I know it's been a difficult day, thank you very much and Anna, thank you also.
All right, thanks, by the way.
So we have a Environment Sustainability Resolution, Anna is going to stay here for it, do you want to read it there, CAO Brad McConnell?
Your Worship, Environment Sustainability Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon and seconded by Counselor Norman Beck. Let it be resolved, the council approved the purchase and delivery of materials for four new transit shelters and twelve transit benches from Daytech for a total of a hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars before taxes and installation costs and that the mayor and COO hereby authorize execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Twill.
Yes, I'll be supporting the resolution, but I want to reiterate what I stated at the committee meeting was, uh, the need for a bus shelter on St. Peter's Road, Gower, uh, made the request for the last two to three years, three years ago to be exact, waiting for new bus shelters, uh, in that particular area, we discussed that, Anna, um, person that contacted me is a, uh, person with disability and, uh, St. Peter's Road, as you know, is like all the main entrances, extremely busy, so, and as we discussed, you know, a bus shelter, uh, on St. Peter's Road near Gower Street and then we even talked about a bus shelter on the other side of St. Peter's Road near the Irving Station, a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic there and, uh, a tremendous need for, uh, bus shelters and, uh, those particular locations, thank you.
Thank you Counsel Twill. I said Counsel Twill. Questions called?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor? Counsel drawn, yea or nay? In favor? Okay, ten zero. Okay, uh, next is Finance Audit Tendering Administration Resolutions, do you want them, just to read them there, Counselor, uh, McLeary, got any points of?
No, good call.
Okay.
Your Worship, Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor John McLeary, seconded by Deputy Mayor, Halani Yankoff. Let it be resolved that the following four-year capital investment plan, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six to twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine, Canada Community Building Fund, direct allocation of twenty point eight million be approved as detailed in the attached report for the following projects, University Avenue Phase One, North River Road Phase One, Exhibition Drive Reconstruction and Capital Drive Phase One.
Okay, Counselor Mitchell Twill.
Thank you, uh, just a question on the process, I sent an email out earlier today to senior management, all senior managers, and the email is as follows, uh, question, why was the resolution administered by the Finance Committee as opposed to the Public Works Committee? Why would the Finance Committee be recommending, uh, potential funding streams for capital projects that are mandated by the Public Works Committee? Did the Public Works Committee authorize these projects, recommend and approve the, uh, potential funding streams and please indicate when the Public Works Committee authorized, commenced and concluded, uh, these particular recommendations? Not opposed to the recommendations, I'm just trying to understand the process. These recommendations should have been administered, approved and recommended by the Public Works Committee from a formal process perspective, so I did send that out earlier, didn't get a response, so can help, someone here help me.
Counselor John McLeire, John, just press your button there, go green light?
Go red.
Okay, red, all right, red to go.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Brown and thank you Counsel Twill, you know, uh, as I sit on Public Works with you, I, uh, I, when I first, uh, you know, saw this, I was kind of thinking maybe the same thing about, uh, Public Works, uh, was maybe may, where this may have, uh, probably started, but, uh, I, um, I dug into it a little bit and, uh, talked with, uh, our finance manager, Lain Pino, and come to understand, um, that, uh, that the Canadian, or the, uh, Canada Community Building Fund, uh, this, uh, this program has, uh, been basically run through finance for the last number of years and, um, I asked, uh, I asked to get- And I asked, I asked to get a little information on it and the process. And Counselor Twill, what, what come back to me, and what I understand and can share with you is, finance is responsible for administering the claims and, and any required reporting to the province. And, and as a result, and also, we prepare the audit and financial statements. So, any, any funding updates or project allocations have been done through the Finance Committee in the past and with the resolution from Finance. And as, with your question, as it relates to Public Works, finance consults with Public Works staff to determine the allocation of the other projects and cash flows and, and that, you know, you know, that have been approved. So, there is a vetting certainly through Public Works staff. And that's, I hope that helps, gives you some clarity on the process.
Counselor Twill, second time.
Yeah, I appreciate your response. I was hoping I would have got a response when I sent the email in earlier today. I didn't get the response. And it's great that, you know, the staff, Public Works Manager, went and made a presentation to the Public Works or Finance Committee. My question is, do the recommendations have to come from the Public Works Committee? From a, from a formal perspective, it starts, commences at the Public Works Committee level. Then it's advanced. I'm not so sure, and if I'm wrong, I'll apologize. But I'm not so sure that had taken place. Not disagreeing with the projects. Once again, I'm trying to understand the process. So, did the Public Works Committee, that's the question. Did the Public Works Committee recommend these four projects for possible funding streams? To see that these projects will come to fruition? That's the question I have. Did, did we advance those four projects from a Public Works Committee perspective? Can somebody help me?
Counselor McLeary?
Yeah, Counselor Twill, you know, as, as I've already shared with you, there, there, these projects have been discussed, I am sure, and advanced from staff and discussed at the, at the committee level, you know, at Public Works. I know, I know you're just not sure in the past if you ever chaired Public Works, but I now, I know you're the current chair at present. So, as it relates more maybe to the process, that I'm not maybe giving you the clarity that you're seeking, could maybe ask Albert or Lain if they can add anything to the clarity you're looking for on process.
Albert or Lain, do you wish to add? I, I know, Lain, there are parameters that the CCBF have to work within, correct? Stormwater management, paving, and so forth. So, if you guys, if one of you can enlighten us on what's going on here, that'd be great.
Sure, so I'll start and let Albert jump in. So, as far as my involvement with this process, I was simply following what's, what's been done before. And based on my review of the last resolutions and the reports that have been advanced based on this topic, it's been, it has gone through the Finance Committee. Now, I, I have not seen any committee reports in, in my information with respect to the Public Works piece in the past. But I do know that, that in the past, that, that the Public Works staff has been deeply involved in terms of identifying what projects fall within the, the parameters of, of this agreement. And, and also, supporting and determining what the, what the cash flow is over the next few years, so we can align it with, with the funding that's identified by CCBF.
And Exhibition Drive has been on the drawing boards now for five-plus years. So, I know the council from the area has been screaming from the rooftop to get this done, so it's there, and, and I think there's a couple of years to it. Albert?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. So, yeah, just to add to what Lain mentioned there, this, these specific streets for, for this report didn't come through the Public Works Committee at this time. But these streets, as well as others, have been presented in the past as part of the five-year plan. And these streets have been included in that plan before. So, in this exercise, Public Works, Finance, as well as Water and Sewer, we worked together to make sure that we were, you know, we picked streets that would encompass and, and work with the parameters set up through the funding agreement. And also, looking at the cash flows again, because this is, at the end of the day, more so kind of a paperwork exercise in the fact that we have this amount of funding over this amount of years that we need to spend. And looking at projecting into the future based on the previous five-year plans and what council has recommended and the wishes we've seen, as well as the high-priority projects that have been, you know, brought, brought up in, in many situations before that have kind of been pushed along, because, you know, we've not had funding or have had other priorities come up. That's when we decided, we picked these streets. We looked at them strategically, have picked some in the next projected year, and then the years to follow, that we know we've already done some design work, already have other preliminary work underway, and just looked at it through that lens.
Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just one question. I'm understanding the process of what's happening here. There'll be four projects in the thing with, on the resolution, five-year plan. Where is Spencer Drive in all of this? We're getting questions on Spencer Drive. The developers are waiting for that road to be put in place before they can start development, but it's not on the five-year plan here.
Counselor McLeary, want to defer it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll maybe reply to the first part of it, and Lain or Albert can, can, can sum in. I mean, I think Counselor McKinnon, or CAO, gave a pretty good update and summary as to where that, where that project, potential project is at. I don't know if you had an opportunity to read that information or not, but, okay. So, there's, you know, there's a pending application in with Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund. And I don't know if staff or CAO or anyone else can give an update as to where that fits. But I think if you have an opportunity to read that information that CAO circulated, it'll certainly answer your question.
Do you want to, can Albert or the, add some light to the issue?
Yes, so, nothing further to add on Spencer Drive. I'd just like to reiterate that, again, these streets, this isn't, but by picking these streets, Public Works, Finance, Water and Sewer, we're not saying that these are the only streets we're going to do. These are just the ones that we've strategically picked over the next four years that fit within this funding. Spencer Drive is, we're also looking at getting funding from another source, so that's why that wasn't included in this one. There's lots of other projects and other items that we will be coming to council with, you know, during the budget time to decide which streets can be done. And again, as outlined in the report, even these streets can be, this is the cash flow plan over the next four years. These streets fit those parameters. Things can move around as, you know, design and construction start as other updates and priorities come up.
Counselor Twill, third time.
Yeah. So, okay, so, you mentioned a five-year plan. I don't know if we discussed that at Public Works. Again, I'm not disagreeing with the projects. We didn't discuss that at Public Works. I'm not sure what you're talking about. Secondly, I would think that the committee would make the recommendation to the Finance Committee as to what those are, what those projects should or should not be. So, I'm, I'm not sure about this, this, this new process. But I'm going to ask Chief Administrative Officer, take this under advisement. I want to understand, you know, how is it that recommendation did not come from the elected representatives of the Public Works Committee? That's why we have a committee. To make these recommendations, we roundtable, we discuss it, we approve it, and then we send it off to Finance. These are the projects that we'd like to see go for federal and provincial funding. I've asked Counselor Turk, you know, were you aware? He said no. So, I, I don't know, there's, there's something missing here. I'm not disagreeing with the projects. Just, I just don't understand the process. I mean, I would think that this would be deliberated, discussed at the Public Works Committee, then the Public Works Committee would forward it on to Finance. That did not happen in this case.
Okay. Counsel Julie McCabe?
Yes, thank you. I, I would like to say that I totally disagree with that statement, that I think it's not bad for a committee to be updated. But I certainly don't think Public Works Committee determines the projects that should be going ahead. I think that that's what the engineers. But I'm saying that I think that goes back to when we were looking for things that we need to be tightened up on in here around processes and how things are going to be. If I can't stress it enough, this would be a time when, again, is another example of when we need clarity around what is that role?
Yeah, yeah. I know this much. I'm not a P. Eng, so I would have difficulty assessing some of these issues. But then you have to work within the financial parameters. Question? Questions called? Oh, sure, deputy, go right ahead.
Thank you. I had actually asked a similar question, and, and I did get an answer, and I thanked Albert for that in the Finance meeting I sat on Finance. I think just to Counselor Twill's point, it's just, it's slightly perplexing when we don't, like, some things go back to its committee, some things get updated, some things don't. So, I think it's just that confusion around where do we, where does the line in the sand draw that it should be vetted through the committee to which those projects, like, that's their home? And so, although we've all been informed tonight, which is wonderful, we now have the information, I think that's, I mean, I can't speak for Counselor Twill, but that's kind of where I was going with it in the Finance meeting, is like, it went to Water and Sewer, and it went to Finance, and I believe it went somewhere else, but it didn't go to Public Works. And so, I think that's the perplexing part, is where, where, where is the line in the sand of when it gets to the committee, that it actually looks as if that's where it belongs? Just my comment. Thank you.
Okay. You want to call the question, John? Or you want to sum it up?
Well, yeah, just, I mean, my experience, you know, around this, this sort of funding and whatever, I guess, three years coming around, it's sitting at this table. I mean, this is a specific fund, right? I guess it was the gas tax fund, but it's called the Canada Community Building Fund. It's, it's, it's a targeted pot of money that's for certain projects. These projects have been vetted and allocated and done the committee thing. I don't think there's anything new with anything that's on here. Exhibition Drive, I think, has been talked about since I've been here. So, anyway, to say that there hasn't been process or it hasn't gone through the right process, I, I don't think, I think it's misleading personally. Thank you. I think it's been through the right channels, had the decision-making, and we're about to vote on this resolution as for the next five-year allocation. Thank you.
You call the question? Questions called? All in favor? Counselor Robert Dron, yea or nay?
In favor?
Okay. I was going to ask if you had any questions, but that's all right. Okay, we have, oh, this is for the long-term debt.
Thank you, Your Worship. Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor John McLeary and seconded by Deputy Mayor Alani Yankoff. Let it be resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for long-term debt financing, that the award to the Royal Bank of Canada be approved for $60 million, with disbursement of funds to occur as $30 million upon execution of loan agreements and $30 million as required. And that the mayor and the CO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All in favor? Counselor Dron?
In favor?
Okay, sir. I think that's it there, CAO for the Finance. Thank you there. Counselor McLeary? Lain Pino, thank you. Albert, you're staying around? Okay. Public Works, Counsel Twill, do you have anything to introduce or just go with the resolutions? What's your, what's your preference? Yes? Yeah, go right ahead.
Just want to go back to what I said earlier. I'm asking the CAO for a full report on the process.
Thank you. Do you want to read the first RFQ award? Aluminum van body.
Public Works Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Counselor John McLeary. Let it be resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for 10 aluminum van bodies, the submission of action car and truck accessories for the purchase of one 10-foot aluminum van body in the amount of $40,484.76 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and the CO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor McKinnon, and then Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a correction in the reading of the resolution. It's not for 10 aluminum van bodies, it's a 10-foot.
It's one 10-foot.
Yeah.
One 10-foot.
My question, I guess, to the Chair or somebody, what is a 10-foot aluminum van body? Do we have a van? I'm just not sure what we're approving here, so.
Counselor Twill, could you clarify the situation, please? And that's one 10-foot aluminum van body, not 10, okay? Hold on, press your button there, green.
Okay, if you read the staff recommendation that council has the per conditions of the public works request for quotes, accept the submission, action car, truck accessories for the purchase of one 10-foot aluminum van body in the amount of, okay, that's what's in the report. So, for more specifics, I'll turn it over to the manager.
Okay. Okay, Albert, can you, can you tell us? Is that aluminum box?
Yes, thank you. Through, Your Worship, through to Counselor McKinnon, yes. So, it is for a, you know, a standard kind of, it would go on the back of a truck, something similar to, you'd see a box truck, like in an aluminum box truck at the back, like our painter trucks or something like that. So, it would just be that accessory that goes on the back of a truck.
Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, this is a follow-up. Do we have the rest of the truck already? Like, is this, what's it going, is this like a, it's, so it is? Okay.
Yes, correct. This, this is just a replacement, because the, the truck is in good condition, but the actual aluminum body van for, that goes on the truck, needs to be replaced.
Thank you. No, thank you for the clarification.
Counselor Kevin Ramsey, word five.
Thank you. Counselor McKinnon stole my question, so I get all the answers. And I was just wondering what it was for, too. It was $40,000, like, for a box. We just didn't know what the story was on it. Thank you, Counselor McKinnon, for that.
Sure, it went rust. Well, question called there, Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor? Robert Dron, Counsel Dron?
In favor?
Okay. Next one, sir.
Public Works Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Counselor John McLeary. Let it be resolved that as per conditions of the public request for quotes for various police fleet 2026, the submission of reliable motors for the purchase of three 2026 police interceptor utility, all-wheel-drive, and one 2026 2500 series HD Crew Cab 4x4 truck in the amount of $248,490 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and the CO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? Ms. Nurt, welcome back. All in favor, just raise your hand. That's the second one now. Counsel Dron, yea or nay?
In favor?
Okay, Carrie, want to read the next one there?
Public Works Committee Resolution Number Three, moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill and seconded by Counselor John McLeary. Let it be resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for the 2025 Street Resurfacing Package C, the submission of Birch Hill Construction Limited in the amount of $484,338 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and the CO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
No, the Chair, Counselor Mitchell Twill, wishes to speak.
During the meeting to discuss this issue, a question come up regarding the possibility of doing more streets. I think on this one here, we're, this tender here, we're doing, what, four or five streets? Yeah. We're doing five. what, four or five streets? Yeah, we're doing five. So we have many streets in our city that need to be pulverized and paved. So the request was made to management to go back and look and to see if there's any other streets that need to be paved, and then considering the time of the year, now it's what? Well, we're going to be in October before you know it. And is there a possibility that we can pulverize and pave more streets? And then you have to take into consideration the water and sewer work that needs to be done as well. So having said all of that, I just wanted to bring the council's attention, again, talking about process at the committee level, we discussed this, and we did make a request to senior management to look at the possibilities of coming in with another set of streets that could be paved. So that's, that's in play.
Okay. Questions called. Wait now, Counsel McKinnon did press his button. Oh, Counsel McKinnon from?
I ask a question.
Ward Eight, Ward Eight?
Ward Eight, thank you very much. No, I appreciate that there is a package C coming out. Just wondering what the timeline for the tender, and for the record, can I get what pulverizing and reconstruction actually stands for, for these streets? Some residents are asking, so for the record.
No, you have to ask the Chair first. Chair, do you want to answer that, or do you want it deferred?
Overly technical. We can turn it over to the manager. Fire away.
Mr. Manager?
Great, thank you. So to answer your first question, this, upon award of this tender, we would reach out to the consultant and hopefully have, look to have this work done, you know, by the end of October, mid-November, keeping in mind that asphalt plants will be closing, usually end of October, mid-November, depending on weather. To answer your second question, so we have coalplain and reconstruct, and then pulverize and reconstruct. Coalplain and reconstruct is usually what you hear when you say mill and pave the street, take off two inches, put two inches back on. The pulverize and reconstruct aspect is a little bit different. You, you go through with the machine, you mill up the road, and you kind of, you can do some regrading, some more under-surface work gets done. So usually this, by doing pulverize and reconstruct, it will give you a little bit of a, a longer life cycle on the street. Again, we look at all of these streets individually. We come up with a plan based on the condition of how bad they are, if they can just be done by milling and paving, or if they need, you know, further work where more subbase material needs to be kind of dug up, mixed, regraded, and then paved. No problem.
Okay, questions called. All those in favor?
Could I ask a question?
Counsel Robert, kidding?
Thank you. Is this the worst, the worst streets that need to be paved, or did you come up with a different concept of, of they're smaller streets or what? I mean, I'm happy to see another package coming out, but, you know, I just, you know, the fairness of it all is, you know, does each ward get some, or do we just pass it on? Is this, is this the worst streets that have to be done? You just, you just hope to get a piece of the pie, as they say. Thank you.
Counsel Twill?
That's a, that's a good question. Counsel is wrong. I mean, I've advocated for that piece of pie for the last thousand years. But, you know, what kept coming back to me was, well, we have to do the worst first. And I believe that is what is before counsel tonight. The manager's here, and if I'm, if I'm wrong, please tell me I'm wrong. But it is with the methodology in that it is the worst first. Now, having said all of that, over the winter months, the senior management are going to, reviewing the process when it comes to evaluating what is the worst first, and they're taking a number of factors into consideration. But to answer your question, this is the worst first.
Okay, thank you.
Call the question. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Counsel Dron?
In favor.
Great, all right. Now, I just have to look at his computer just a minute. It's not the same as mine. Okay. Do we have any other items for Public Works?
No.
Kate seeing none. How are we doing for time? Okay, could I have a motion to move into closed section as per Section 1191 of the Municipal Government Act? Hit, moved by Counsel Twill, seconded by Counsel Ramsey. All those in favor? Yes, yes.
Just before we do.
Okay.
I've said here at the last number of meetings, we have representatives here from QB 830. They've sent a number of requests wanting to have the opportunity to meet with mayor and counsel for information sharing purposes only, just to share information. And I've been to, you know, I've been to a couple of their meetings, and just, just to make counsel more aware of some of the challenges they're facing, and I just wanted to bring that forward once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Counsel Ramsey?
Well, yes, Your Worship, and something I forgot earlier in the evening. I'd like to congratulate, or we as council like to, Charlestown, Charlestown Goody Auto Bodies just won the Nerdsick Senior Baseball League again. They're going to the Nationals again. They won Monday night in the Mary Machine, eight-one, I believe the score was, and now they're going to be representing that league again next year at the Nationals in Mary Machine.
All you, good news, Counsel Ramsey. Okay. Question called? Question called. All in favor? Did you pass the resolution?
Yeah.
Oh, you're not. Did you vote in 119? Okay.
Close session.
Just one sec. Counsel Bernard? Okay. So, we're moving back into an open session. Yeah, just one second. Hold on, hold on. Any business arising from the closed session?
None.
Motion to adjourn?
Thanks, Justin.
Second it by Counsel Tweel? All in favor? Thank you.